Good evening and welcome. Welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board for Tuesday, April 12th, 2016. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. Thank you again. Ted, if you would, please call the board.
Severson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lanmore here.
Superintendent Kelly.
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First up would be the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura, thank you.
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. Hearing non-alaws in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Announcements, April 19th at 5:00 p.m., a school board listening session. Also, April 19th at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. On April 26th, there will be a regular school board meeting at 7:00 p.m. May 10th at 5:00 p.m. will be a subcommittee on policy. Also, May 10th, 7:00 p.m., a regular school board meeting. May 17th at 5:00 p.m., school board listening session. May 17th at 5:30, a school board work session. On May 24th, at 7:00 p.m., a regular school board meeting. Next up is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Communication to the board, citizen employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration to follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Anybody that wanted to address the board? Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March 8th school board meeting, the March 8th special call work session, and the March 15th school board work session. It also includes the personnel report and the treasures report for February 2016. And if I could get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
By Natty, thank you. Discussion. Hearing non-alaws in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items, reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Natty, would you mind going first, please?
Yeah, it's been a while. I had to think back. I got to attend Cafe 49 over at the Columbia Academy. It was an ensemble performances from different band students. It was fun to see them do that and try something new, including the jazz band that meets early in the mornings before school. Made it to girls' night out at Highland, which was interesting, first time I've been to something like that. Went to a varsity girls' softball game in the cold and then followed it with a JV boys' baseball game in the cold and have had a lot of opportunities over the last weeks to talk with parents and other citizens.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Molly?
I had a chance to join Ms. Bluth at the academy for one of her annual events where she does the manners breakfast, which was nice to enjoy some time with teachers and students. Also had the wonderful opportunity to join the high school in celebrating the college board's AP School of the Year for Small Schools. It was a wonderful celebration and event on Wednesday of this last week. And also attended a varsity track meet just prior to this meeting in the cold. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ted?
I had an opportunity to attend the Castle Heights charrette, which was a very interesting experience. I think I'm thankful for all the community members that participated and staff, and we had some good ideas come out of that and look forward to seeing that come into fruition. Thank you for Superintendent Kelly for meeting with me today. Attended the Valley View PTO meeting and a good turnout for that meeting as well, so thank you to all the parents that came to that. I was also at the college board ceremony. We are one of three schools in the country, or districts, to be awarded that small district AP School of the Year, so it's a fabulous distinction and hats off to all of our staff and students for their hard work. Attended the WMAP board meeting, finance committee meeting, and executive committee meeting. WMAP continues to be making progress in managing its finances and producing services that are needed by the member districts, so that's progressing very well. Also attended to Lions meetings and Chamber of Commerce meetings and talk with constituents. I did get an update on WMAP on the services that we were estimated to have receiving from WMAP, and they based those services on 28 students signing up for four different strands of the Native American, Latino, Freedom Riders, and African-American strands. So I think that's where the, perhaps some confusion occurred. There were 28 students actually signed up and only, I understand, two or three attended ultimately, so that's where they came up with their $42,000 figure. So just want to report that out.
Anything else? Nope. Okay. Laura?
I was apparently pretty busy. Well, I did attend the Cafe 49, and that was absolutely wonderful. And then they had a couple of students that kind of DJ'd the event, and they put on these little skits and stuff. It was so much fun. It was in the cafeteria, but it didn't feel like a cafeteria. It started to feel like a cafe. It was wonderful, creative, and fun. I really, really, really enjoyed it, and I hope they decide to do that again. It was a lot of fun. I also attended the Highland night. They had sous on the loose, and they had a magician there. And the kids were, they were down in the front, and they were involved and having a good time, and they got big bucks, which I thought was really fun. Kids had a really, really good time, and it was absolutely delightful. And, you know, so hats off to the Highland PTO. They did a fabulous job. I also attended the Northeast Metro 916 meeting, and I guess a couple of high points is we did have a presentation on the impact of childhood trauma and some of the statistics that came out of that, and I do believe we're going to be looking into this probably a little bit more closely with some, maybe some personal development opportunities and maybe some different strategies in the classroom. I think that's probably the main thing that happened at that meeting. Then I attended, actually, the National School Board Association, and I attended several different seminars and sessions, and I had my notes here, and I've lost them. But I did, I went to one which was called Capturing Children's Hearts, which was very, very good. I attended another one that was building leadership across the district, which was actually also very good. A district in Kansas City, which is in Missouri, which is, I thought was cute. They actually developed, they were having, they wanted to have more opportunities for their staff to be able to pursue maybe, you know, careers in administration or try that, so they actually started a whole kind of a training program to, so that they could actually fill those positions within the district. So, and that's been apparently very successful, and they said their staff has a tendency to come back to them, which is great. I also, do, 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 see, team leadership, so, so. I also attended a seminar on autism and the parents of autistic children and how teachers, how the different strategies teachers can use for being able to keep these children engaged and to work with the parents on better strategies for, you know, being able to make sure that they can get through the day and be have productive learning. And then there's several other things, but some of it, we're going to have a meeting, probably not this week, but maybe next week, and perhaps we'll have something more in-depth to go to the board. I also attended the chair meeting and the subcommittee on policy. Was that short enough? I tried to make it really short. I'm sorry, we got a lot of presentations tonight, so I apologize it took so long. If anybody has any more in-depth questions, I can certainly answer them.
Thank you.
It's good.
I was also able to attend the recognition for our success in our AP program, unless you're going to talk about it in your superintendent's report, I would like to at least for the record, throw some numbers out and let you correct me when it gets to your turn. But if I understand it correctly, there were over 14,000 districts across the United States and Canada that were considered, that have AP programs and were considered for, or looked at for this award. Of those districts, they divided them into small, medium, and large districts. I believe the one that matters to us, the small district, was students of 8,000 or less. Of those 14,000, 425 districts across the United States and Canada were selected to the honor roll, the college board's AP honor roll. And from those 425, my understanding is there was one small district, one medium district, and one large district selected for the recognition. And Columbia Heights was the district for the small schools that was selected, so in theory, out of 14,000. But it was a phenomenal award, a huge hats off to everybody involved. And I mean, I see elementary, you know, staff here tonight, and I was thinking about it as I was talking, but, you know, these are the products of students that have come from the elementary schools and the middle school and are working their work through. So a huge, huge honor, very exciting, and I was really happy to be able to be a part of that, so congratulations to everybody in the district on that award, so. And I also attended the chair meeting and the policy meeting prior to this. And that's it. Go ahead and correct away.
Mr. Chair and members, I have no corrections on the career celebration, the award. It was amazing, and I'm thrilled, and I will reference that later, but no correctives. I do want to revisit WMAP one last time from the standpoint of communication between WMAP and, and it's probably the administration of the district, it's not at the board level, but in point of fact, we were and had, only did, were planning on participating in the Native American strand. We talked about it the year before and said we would put our toe in the water once and see if we at first could get appropriate staff and if we could get student participation, and we had another big field trip that was going on this year, so that is what's always our intentionality. So we were trying one, and that was seven. And Xena went on that trip, and we did have two students participate, so that part is correct. And perhaps Xena can clarify with Anthony over at WMAP, Galloway, later, about that communication, because that's not a board-level thing at this point, but that is where we stand, and we're always going to send our allocation of seven. And at the end, only two did attend, and I want to thank Director Stenwick for going on the entire trip over spring break. In addition to that, Donna and I both visited the Columbia Heights Fire and Police Departments and brought them thank-you treats for all of the support and assistance they give the district and our students throughout the year, and it was fun seeing their departments again. I also met with Chief Nadeau individually on the Big Brothers Program and mentorships. He said he misses the elementaries now that his Biggs is over at the academy, but he's getting to see the academy a little bit more in-depth. And what we're really trying to do is grow our own mentors so that our high school students can work with our littlest scholars, and so that is the next step of the Biggs and Littlest Program. While he was meeting with me, he also gave me a foreshadowing of something that made the papers, and that was that Columbia Heights is one of 20 finalists for the All-American City Award, and that is a tremendous accolade to the city, and I want to especially say congratulations to them, and that they have been invited to, as finalists, to present and make their case in June to the, to the juried members. The only other city in the state of Minnesota is Woodbury. And so we'll be working collectively with the city, because we were one of their projects, to see what that demonstration should be like. But really, it's like the Oscar for cities, and so to be a finalist and to be named is really a big deal, so congratulations to them. The Columbia Heights High School Choir, Concert Choir will be attending the Windy City Coral Festival this week. They actually leave at 7:30 on Thursday morning.
Six thirty.
Well, that's the bag check, where the bus leaves at 7:30.
I have to be here at six thirty.
It's all a matter of perspective. And so we're really looking forward to that. We've had multiple planning meetings in preparation for the trip, and I want to say good luck to the choir, and I also want to say congratulations to the choir in advance, because they sent in a tape, and they were so good, that the festival asked them to be a solo choir. And so they'll be performing not only in the large ensembles, but in the solo choir, which is pretty outstanding, so congratulations to Director Jakes and the entire choir. And Director Stenwick and I will be going as chaperones on that trip, so thanks to them in advance for letting us tag along. Superintendent of St. Anthony, New Brighton, Bob Laney and I met regarding possible additional collaborations in integration and programming between the two school districts. You know, last summer, we had that really kind of exceptional experience around writing with the two districts, and that worked so well that we thought we would have a second cohort this summer. And in addition to that, we would like to do some K8 planning for upcoming things for next year. So we're going to get on that by the end of April, and we'll have other good things to be put out for that. I think some of you have heard us talk that we're engaged in a Medal of Honor group work, because Columbia Heights Public Schools has a Medal of Honor recipient that attended here, and there's a park named after him in the city, and it's Private First Class James LaBelle. And so we are in the process of seeing how we can make that come alive for our students. And we had, just this week, we have teachers over learning more about the Medal of Honor curriculum, and we hope that in October of next year, to have some ceremonies around that, and we will be keeping the board informed, and of course, you're all invited. There was a special election during the period, and so tonight, we'll be canvassing those votes, and you'll be making everything official. I want to go back to the presentation this week, the Columbia Heights Public Schools was named with that award, and in addition to everything else, I want to thank the students and the staff and the admin who worked so hard and made that award possible. And actually pulling off an event like that, they were here for three days. They did a lot of what they call B-roll, and I'm not sure I know what that is, but they filmed a lot, they did a lot of interviews with our students, and just absolutely were amazed. They were particularly happy that we had a great diverse mix of students, and particularly that we had Native American students that they were interested in interviewing. So we look forward to more celebrations in July, when they're nationally presented with the award, but it was really a great day, and thanks to all of you that came, and we'll be celebrating for a good while on that one. We had a licensed labor management meeting that happened, and then I had the opportunity to meet with multiple members of the school board, both together and individually, so I want to thank all of you for your time. That's it.
Thank you. All right, we'll keep it moving. First up is the North Park facilities update, so everybody that's a part of that, come on up. Dan, I'm glad you could be here.
Mr. Chair, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, good evening. First, I'd like to introduce my posse here. With me immediately to my right is Dan DeVoe. You've met him before. He's an architect with the Cunningham Group and is also was our researcher when he was a grad student at the University of Minnesota. Next to him is John Hewnink. John is an engineer working with us through Cross Anderson. And then, of course, you know Directors Holmgren and Hennickins. And as usual, we have support behind us. Meg Parsons is here. She is a principal at the Cunningham Group, and also Tanya Sterm, our Dean of Students at North Park, two people that have been with us every step of the way for the information we're about to present this evening. So what you'll see this evening is not an abridged, but a streamlined version of what you saw at recent work session. So there's a photo from our playground slash parking lot slash bus drop-off area at North Park. So our agenda for this evening is much like it was a few weeks ago. We're going to take a look at the overall existing conditions, as well as the original master plan, and then a new master plan. So existing conditions, I'm going to go rather quickly through these, because I know Dan will touch on them far more eloquently than I ever could when we get to the master planning portion. Some things I would like to point out, as I sort of mentioned in my intro, we have some, we need some site work. As you see there, our bus lane, first of all, our buses enter and exit through essentially what is a one-lane driveway between houses in our neighborhood, and they have to do a full circle on what is our playground, which unfortunately is about 20% smaller than it was two years ago, because we had to reclaim some of it so we could improve our parking. And of course, you also see our playground is, you know, quite small and definitely not up to district specs, as well as, well, we're always going to have to deal with a hill that's there, but we also have a nice swamp below the hill. You all probably have a good idea of the footprint of North Park, and I know that we've reviewed this in the past, so I'm going to skip through this a little bit more quickly. We have our special education classrooms and our specialist classrooms downstairs, as well as our second grade, and a point of contention, our cafetorium, which having a cafeteria and a gym adjacent to one another makes both of them a lot less useful than they would be if they were separated. In addition, there's a stage there, and our students eat lunch on the stage, and it's always a little bit precarious. You're always afraid that students might fall off the stage. There also is a false wall or a movable wall there, and the movable wall is 50 years old, and it likes to come off track and so on quite often. Upstairs, we've got, I'm sorry, we're still downstairs here, with a boiler room and some office spaces, as well as our book room and our music room. And then as you go upstairs, we've got our third and fourth grade studios, the linear models, which I know we mentioned in our research presentation recently, that the linear models, while we're happy to have them, are nowhere near as effective as our original model, which is now our fifth-grade studio. We also have our kindergarten, our pre-K, first grade, and admin upstairs, as well as our science and some other special education spaces. Of course, our mechanical spaces, and as I mentioned previously, admin. So looking at our necessary building upgrades, I know that Bill presented this in more depth the last time, but if we're looking at just our deferred maintenance, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, essentially getting things up to, you know, specifications, district specs?
Yeah, getting the building to where it needs the updates that we need to do, even if we don't do any type of a project with North Park Elementary School, we will need to spend $9.3 million on it in the next 10 years to keep that as a viable building.
So we will do a brief review of the 2013 master plan. Many people, at a staff meeting today, I just asked my own staff at North Park, you know, how many folks were still with us that served on that master plan charrette, and many, many, many hands, 15 hands at least came up, and I know Board Member Severson was a part of that, as well as Dean of Students Sterm sitting behind. And so these were our master plan goals initially. The site work, of course, safety, security, and admin. We are the only building in the district that doesn't have a single point of entry. Splitting up the gym and the cafeteria somehow to make each of them a more viable space. At that time, we thought we needed five more learning studios, and really, it's quite fortunate that we did not go forward with the plan at that point, because after Dan's excellent research, you know, we've determined we actually need, dean, to have three, so we would need an additional two. Also, looking a bit more closely at library, art, science, and music space. So this is the lower level of our original master plan. You'll see in the back, there would be a small addition that would add a couple of studios downstairs, as well as moving the administration to the east, I'm sorry, the west side of the building, with the site work being done to create a more appropriate parking space where our current playground is, so that parents would be able to park and staff would be able to park and come in through the front door, having to enter through administrative offices, so we could have that single point of entry. In addition, we had talked about building a gym into the hill and improving our band and music spaces. And then Superintendent Kelly's favorite part is that landscape arboretum up at the top there in the horseshoe. And then if you look at the top level, there are two more learning studios that are on top of the other two that would have been built. In addition, a library to be adjacent to where the gym was being built, with some special ed space going above the admin space. Science moving to where our current administration space is adjacent to the courtyard, and on the other side of the courtyard have art rooms. So the master plan 2016, this, we haven't stopped planning, we haven't stopped studying in those three years. We've just continued to assess our needs and really to improve upon the plan that we started in 2013. And so if you look at the goals, really, they're essentially the same, except for one really important addition. You know, we still have the site work. We still have the safety, security, and moving the admin. We still have splitting up the gym and the cafeteria. One, of course, slight alteration is we've determined we don't need five learning studios, we really need three learning studios. Also, taking a closer look at library, art, science, and music, but also to have a more thoughtful approach and more intentional design for our special ed space, which looking back on the 2013 model, it really wasn't quite intentional enough. So that's something that we went into the latter stages of this final process, really paying attention to. And at this point, I'm going to pass things off to Dan, so he can speak far more eloquently about our site needs.
Thanks, Jeff, and Chair Larkin, members of the board. Superintendent Kelly, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did want to back up really quickly and let John Hewnink just mention where we were in 2013 about the estimated cost, to give you an idea of what you're about to see with the master plan numbers moving forward, so.
Well, we simply took the master plan. You had the estimate of $14 million, and we inflated it for today's construction dollars. And inflation moves over 20 years at a 3% average. Lately, it's been closer to 5% to 8%. That is starting to come back down, so we took a look at those costs and estimated to 2016 to $16 million for the master plan project in today dollars.
Thank you. So moving forward to today, what you'll see here, and I'll go through it a little bit quicker, are just a series of diagrams that start to explain some of the things that would like to be resolved in the effect that a master plan goes into place at North Park. As Jeff mentioned, one of the first things that would like to be addressed is the current parking. What you see there in red are the current parking locations at North Park. Totalling stalls is about 65. That number ideally would be somewhere upwards of 80. Also like to address consolidating that parking to a central location. The black arrows indicate pedestrian traffic flow to get to the front entry currently presents a safety concern for the building as well. One of the other things that would need to be addressed, as Jeff has mentioned, is the conflict with the receiving bus lane and bus drop-off, specifically with how it conflicts with the playground, which is the big red dot, which is also currently the bus drop-off and pickup. So in the proposal, there would be a resolution to that as well. As I mentioned, the playgrounds are currently separated on both sides of the building, which early learning is in the back, and then the first grade and fifth grade playgrounds are in the front, which presents a slight issue with bus drop-off in the afternoon, as well as a current visitor parking location. The administration location currently is in the center of the building. The resolution to that would ideally move it towards the front of the building, so that anyone, students entering the building, would have direct access into admin, and they wouldn't have to go through the building before entering a safe and secure location. have to go through the building before entering a safe and secure location. One of the other items would be to address the early learning and pre-K space, specifically to provide a safe and secure area in the building for them. And in an ideal world, have them more near the locations that they use more frequently. Current numbers suggest that they spend up to about 40 minutes per day walking to adjacent support spaces, whether that's cafeteria, gym. So the opportunity would be, can we consolidate that to a safe location on the lower level? And then this diagram just looks at the existing circulation pathways. And the intention here is just to illustrate that there is some, given the existing architecture of the building, there are some circulation constraints, which both create some spaces towards the center of the building that make daylighting very difficult, but then also just as we talk about expansion to the building, it really does limit our possibilities. What you see here is the circulation, as I mentioned, does create two spaces in the middle of the building that would normally not have daylighting. If you're familiar with the building, on the upper level, you have the kindergarten and admin spaces, and on the lower level, as Jeff mentioned, you have the gym and the cafeteria. Fortunately enough, on the upper level, there's a courtyard which gives ambient light to the administration and kindergarten spaces respectively. That is not resolved on the lower level, so that's something that we would like to address in the resolution. Similarly, in both the research that we did at the University of Minnesota, there is some research that suggests that the current learning studio model of the fifth grade, what is fifth grade now, what was the second grade learning studio, does work in a more ideal fashion, and that there may be some opportunity for improvements to the third and fourth grade learning studios as well. One of the other things I would like to address on the lower level, currently, the special education is separated amongst three or four spaces, not an ideal sort of location. Currently, they're using a bathroom across the hallway for changing rooms, and we'd like to address that in terms of efficiency and just appropriateness for special education Also, on the lower level, we have music, a bookroom, and art, which are currently 900 square feet. An appropriate-sized spaces would be about 1,200 square feet, so in a plan, we'd like to address that as well and make those spaces a little bit more appropriate for the required use. So with that being said, we'll move forward with the design recommendations. What you see here is the proposal on the lower level. The proposal looks at adding a 4,000-square-foot gym to the northwest corner of the building as well as moving the administration level and main entry down to the lower level, as well as opening up the cafeteria space on the lower level as well. So the admin would be relocated and centralized to the lower level, would provide a larger space for music, as well as an addition and relocation of the early learning and pre-K spaces to the back of the building. I also do want to let Bill quickly mention a cost associated with the early learning addition related to other elementary schools.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit more detail on the costs here in a minute, but when you look at the bump out, they're looking at the square footage that we would be adding to that building is approximately the same square footage as we did to Valley View and Highland Elementary School. So when you see the cost, you see that piece of it, it's about the same cost we spent on the other two buildings.
Moving up to the second level, right above the early learning and pre-K space, there's a proposal to add the equivalent square footage of two learning studios for a total of three. The one that's not shown would be essentially unaltered moving forward. The relocation of special ed, consolidating that to the upper level adjacent to the elevator, as well as the opportunity to engage the courtyard there that I mentioned before.
And the special ed space would have three bathrooms associated with it, and really, it'd be in the center of the building. It would be the heart of the building, which is something that we've really always dreamt of having at North Park.
As I mentioned before about just the current size and the fact that the media arts space does not exist for the elementary school, so providing that program for them is highly needed, as well as just increasing the general square footage of science, art, and the library. And then lastly, as I mentioned, providing an appropriate space for a third, potentially a third, fourth, or fifth grade learning studio. That would look something like this with the potential to mimic more closely what the research supports in terms of what's being successfully seen at what is now the fifth grade learning studio level. So an emphasis on providing quality daylighting, opportunity for personalized learning as well. And then these spaces, which are associated with the master plan but not directly affected, there would be the existing learning studio, which is currently the fifth grade. The four first grade, 900 square foot, would remain as it is now. And then there's an opportunity for a integrated second grade to essentially take over what is now the third grade learning studio with slight modification. So the idea here is to integrate students into the learning studio model one step at a time, so they're not just going from a 900-square-foot classroom into a full-fledged learning studio. They have the opportunity to transition into that and be more successful that way. And then zooming out a little bit more, talking more about the site specifically, this proposal suggests adding two curb cuts to the, on the lower side of the screen here, one for a designated bus lane that would support 12 buses, the other for a dedicated student drop-off. And so the idea would be to separate those two to really provide a much more safe and secure area for students to be dropped off as well as parking. If I didn't mention it, the parking number would then increase by about 15. And then looking towards the back of the building, the proposal looks at adding an early learning playground to the lower level where the existing parking is now off of the east side of the building, so that early learning has a direct access out onto that for a hard surface play area, and then really isolating the existing receiving area, although it is not being moved, in this proposal, it does provide just a little bit more adequate access to that area as well. So with that, we'll hand it over to John again to talk a little bit about the cost.
Thank you, Dan. Well, as Dan and Jeff again get to talk about some really neat design ideas, Bill and I get to talk about even more exciting costs. So the first one is a summary of the sheet, but we have two more pages that makes the print a little bit bigger. We want to afford it so we can read it a little bit better. Thank you. So the first page, we're showing our construction dollars, or you'll hear us talk about it, hard costs. And I'll go through them quickly. We have our site work and our playground costs, $650,000. And then we have new construction, and it is based off square footages, but it's based off experience. It's based off other projects that we may be working on over the years and pulling that out of databases and putting it on the spreadsheet. Then you see we have heavy, medium, and light construction. Those are actually remodel areas. So the heavy would be, as you can imagine, moving walls, a lot of mechanical, a lot of electrical, maybe structural, or heavy all the way to light, which is mostly finishes, which could be paint, carpet, and ceilings. We have a contingency included in the project. We also have inflation on an average of about 4%. And then we have the deferred maintenance costs that we're pulling forward into the project of $675,000. So the hard cost is $10,782,326. So those would be the hard construction dollars. If you move to the next page, what we call soft costs or soft and owner costs, these typically average 25%. The first three or four line items are professional fees. Then you have permitting, you have special testing, you have surveys. FFNE in the middle there, that stands for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So when you build new spaces, you put in newer furniture in certain areas that you have right now. And other development, well, you wouldn't have many development fees, but other storm area charges, which equal $2,695,000. That's the 25%. So adding that on to the 10.7 million I talked about earlier, adding on the two, almost 2.7 million, is $13,477,908. So for the project that Dan just talked about, that is the construction project budget for hard and soft cost. I don't know, Bill, if you want to add any more detail?
Well, I think we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. I want to talk about inside of this 13, you know, $13.5 million, four and a half million of that cost is deferred mains that we would have had to do with, due to the building anyway. This has really the biggest pieces of these costs are the ventilation systems in this building that would be redone at the time, we had taken it apart. We also have 1.2 million that would qualify as health and safety costs, which would come out of our regular health and safety budget. And then we look at our capital projects levy, we would definitely put at least 600,000 into this project out of that levy as deferred maintenance. And then, so you can see that out of that 9.3 we talked about earlier, we'd only have three more million we need to find in the next 10-year period to get, and what that is, is roofs and windows is what's kind of left. But older building, a lot of things to do to it. And then we'll just touch on a tax impact. So when we look at the full cost of the 13 and a half million, we look at a $100,000 house, it'd be a yearly tax impact of $48,000, which breaks down to about $4 on a monthly basis, and 150,000 would be about $84,000 to $7,000 a month. Right now, our average cost of a home in Columbia Heights in our district is about $125,000, so it'd be right in between those two.
Questions?
So, ah, it's a big one. What's the impact on education for the students on all this?
Well, the impact on education, first of all, as far as having the freedom of having a site where students can actually go outside and have a proper playworks or recess, I always think that has a huge impact on education. Also, being able to have a lunchtime that doesn't extend through about 60% of the school day, I think that that will have a huge impact on success. Plus, having the two additional learning studios that are modeled much more closely to what the research shows is more effective, I think will make the third and fourth grade experiences for our students much more successful and appropriate. Additionally, we'll be saving 42 minutes a day that our kindergartners currently are using to transition from where they are to lunch, to playworks, to and from the buses, to specials, and so on. So that will be additional instructional time right there. Plus, the improvements in our special education spaces. Currently, our special education staff is stretched incredibly thin, and because they have to be in so many different places at once, when a child needs to use the bathroom, for instance, or needs to be changed. To be able to consolidate those spaces the way that this design does it, I think would have an enormous impact on our most vulnerable students at the elementary level. Additionally, the improved arts spaces and the improved science lab. Right now, if you walk into Mr. Maraz's science lab, I mean, brilliant, absolute brilliant science happens there, but you also see projects stacked on top of one another because he doesn't have any storage space. And you'll see much the same thing in our art studio currently, wonderful things happening, three-dimensional arts, graphic arts that aren't happening in a lot of other places, a lot of sculpture. But you, again, you see projects stacked on top of one another. In music, you see Mr. Welch has a slightly more empty space, so you see a lot of him doing a lot of his own storage. So you'll see the risers in there. You'll see every instrument that we own in there. For band, for instance, we have to sacrifice the music room twice a week for an hour in the morning so that we can have full band because we don't have a proper full band space. Currently, our band is, they're getting their lessons in their small groups in essentially what used to be an office because we don't really have a dedicated band space. We provide appropriate band space, but it's not dedicated. And really, I could probably go on all night. So each one of these things has an impact on the day of a student at North Park, and essentially, I mean, those are the things that, it's like you keep putting, adding those little pebbles onto the back, you know, and eventually, it's like having a huge boulder where we're spending so much time trying to figure out how to eke every last square inch of our space to create appropriate programming that it ends up affecting everyone.
Okay, thanks.
I have one, or two separate things, actually. One is, just to clarify then, the science, art, and music would be more equitable to what, or more comparable, I'm sorry, to Valley View and Highland currently have?
They would be identical.
Okay. That was one thing. And then also, could you, I think last time you did a really good job of explaining the needs of North Park if we weren't to move forward with anything and the cost of that, just the maintenance that needs to be done?
Bill, you want to go?
Well, it goes back to where we started with the $9.3 million. Look, we mentioned, you know, this is a building that hasn't had a lot done to it since it was built back in, you know, the early 60s. For example, all the windows need to be replaced. We need more efficient windows. If you remember, the ventilation systems in this, in this building are the small unit ventilators in each particular room. They actually don't give us enough air in those rooms for the number of students that we have in the room. So the ventilation system is a huge piece of redoing. We're going to have to put a new roof on that building. And the other big piece that we really need to look at is the security of the building. We need to find a way to get the administrative offices, they're in the middle of the building, out to the front, so that when someone comes into our building, they're being greeted right away with somebody from the administrative office. So those are the big pieces that we need to take care of. Of course, we've talked about parking too, and we've been working on the other buildings, taking care of the parking and, you know, taking apart the busing and the parent drop-off and separating that. That be accomplished here as we are doing in the other buildings also.
I think there's also, and you might have picked up on it too, but the project, just by going forward with the $13.5 million project, accounts for 4.5 of that million of that deferred maintenance. So although the deferred maintenance is 9.2, because if the project were to go forward at the 13.4, four and a half of that is essentially integrated into that project just by doing it as well.
Thank you.
How many are thoughts on updating the building in this way? How do you feel that could impact, like, our competitiveness with neighboring schools, student retention? Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
I, you know, that's a good question, Eddie, and it's enormous. It's something that we think about all the time. We currently have a neighborhood, you know, in my 12-year tenure there, it's been mostly retired folks, but it's starting to turn over. And I'll be honest, we don't have the greatest curb appeal, and I know it's something you and I have talked about. And this really promotes a pretty fantastic curb appeal. It also promotes a welcomeness that we currently find a difficult time extending to families as they're standing outside of our doors at this point buzzing, hoping, you know, that, you know, somebody can rush from the office, you know, 55, 60 feet away to be able to let them in. And I know security is always something that, you know, we are a secure building, but it's something that we have to work really, really hard at. And I know there are a lot of energies of our clerical staff and our admin staff that go toward that, that really should be going more specifically toward our kids. And that's the first thing that you see when you come into North Park. Luckily, you also see those beautiful colored floors, you know, which, you know, hopefully that saves us to an extent. But I, you know, in my experience, if we get a family in for a tour, I mean, we're going to get them. Nine times out of 10, I am confident that we're going to get them. They're going to send their students to our school. But when your first view of the school is the swamp outside after a rainstorm, or, you know, for most of the spring after the snow melts, or looking at the playground and comparing it to the play areas of other schools, and just, you know, overall, just looking at the building as it is, 50 years old, it can be difficult to compete if people are using their eye test first. In addition, when I do a tour, it's pretty obvious. They see instruction happening in the hallways in small groups. You know, they see instruction happening in, you know, like in, close to the elevator. We use every square inch to, for learning for our children, and this really provides space that kids deserve to learn in. Our kids are willing to learn just about anywhere, but I think that this meets them where they need to be.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there going to be four studios in the current design, or?
There'll be three studios. And then there's also the second grade space, which we have a footprint there, and if this does go ahead, we would sit down with our staff to determine exactly what that space would look like. But it would be something between, you know, four segregated classrooms and an actual learning studio, because we'd really want to use second grade to start ramping up the programming and also ramping up the creative use of space to get our students ready for the third grade studio.
Okay, so currently, that's a studio space right now?
It is. It's the fourth grade studio right now.
Okay. But you could adapt it to however?
We could. And, you know, in our initial designs for the third and fourth grade studios, we were very intentional about not doing anything that'll be wasted later. So the only things that we put into those studios that we would have to redo is the paint. The carpet tiles- The carpet tiles come up. All of the dirt walls, they're movable. We can move those and we can reuse them. The furniture, same thing. And really, that's the extent of a learning studio. So I can assure you that nothing that we've done will be in vain.
And what's the rationale for doing it now, other than need, obviously?
Need is huge. Need is huge. I think everything, everything that everyone's mentioned. And I'm not going to, you know, undersell what Natty mentioned, you know, about, you know, hey, we have a neighborhood turning over, you know, how could this help us from the standpoint of enrollment? Because that's enormous. I mean, that's something that we are constantly battling against. We are the school that we, the only school in the district that has three districts adjacent to it. And in addition, we pull about 80 to 85% of our kids from Heights. And we pull kids from the furthest point away from us in the district. We're way up there in the northeast corner, and we pull all the kids way down in the southwest corner. So we're really, if you counted, actually, we could even argue five districts that we're adjacent with. And so it's a constant competitive world for us, you know, as right now, we're in the middle of our recruiting four-year-olds, you know? And I'll be honest, when I first came here, I started in January, it starts in September now. It's something we're very serious about. We have to maintain our enrollment, and I think that that plays a, will play a huge piece of that also.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just had a follow-up on that as well, and that is, if we were not going to do this, we would still have to do things at North Park. You've heard about the windows and the roof and things like that, but in addition, you always do things in cycles around here, so we would have to put on an early learning incubator. We would need to have comparable space for the science and the music and the arts. So if we're going to touch the building, we're going to be doing something to the building. So it would be probably better to be proactive and take a look at what's the best use of space, rather than trying to figure out how we can modify the existing space to kind of fit those in piecemeal.
I have a question. Always looking for more efficiencies. And one of the things that really struck me with a lot of the comments that you've made is that the kids are doing a lot of things that are not academic, which is pretty much standing in line.
Yeah.
Okay. How much actual academic line, academic time, playtime, more productive time, would this save, basically, you know, having everything be more, because North Park is kind of set up like a mess. And I'm not real, I'm not real happy with the security issue, but I knew that that was going to be a major project. So how much time do you think we're going to be putting back into a classroom or something that's productive?
Well, yeah, that'll be hard to say, because the only grade levels we did a time study for were kindergarten and pre-K, so I can speak with real data there.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I can tell you, for instance, I bring students in from playworks. That's, I'm a principal, and every day, I bring four of our grade levels in from playworks into the cafeteria, because of the amount of staff that it would require for us to have students safely get in from the play areas, because there are so many blind spots. It's also an area where there are cars driving all the time, because it's our parking lot, too. So I do that, and that's a significant amount of my time, but this is not about my time. But what I will say is, every day when I come down to get third grade, for instance, I look over and I'm like, oh, fifth grade's still on the ramp. You know, fifth grade's not through the lunch line yet. I know, well, we're running late, you know, they must be having mashed potatoes today. You know, that's usually what it is. And so I call up to our playwork staff, say, well, you know, we're going to have to hold off on third grade, you know, give them more playworks time, which is a great thing, except for the fact that then they get less lunchtime. Because rather than have them stand in line all the way down the hallway like they would be, we'd rather keep them out playing. But things like that, we get nickelled and dimed every single day, our kids do, because of things like that. And that cafeteria setup alone, I would say that that, I'm loath to put a number on it, but I do know that our lunch period overall would probably be an hour less and far more efficient if it were set up differently. And kids would not be, right now, it's not an unusual day for a kid to be waiting in line for 20 minutes, which is, you know, less, five minutes less than the amount of time they get for lunch, just to get their lunch.
So in your opinion, although you only have data for kindergarten and pre-K, is that they are actually losing instruction time?
Absolutely. There's no doubt about it.
So if we weren't to do this, we would have to extend your day, so that they would get the same instruction time as the rest of the district?
Well, I believe that that would be a contractual issue with a whole lot of marketing units that I don't want to get into, but, you know, yeah, in order for students, really we would need a longer day at North Park to have the same amount of instructional time as the other buildings are getting right now.
And you're doing wonderful work over there. Imagine what you could accomplish.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just want to, is there, are there increased costs, you know, after this is done, in maintaining the building, operational costs, or would we actually save money operationally? Does anybody know?
Yeah, that's a good Bill and John question. I know when we have 50-year-old mechanicals, I can't imagine that that's not the case.
Yeah, you'll certainly save operational dollars from all the mechanical and electrical systems that you have, and, I don't know, maybe, Bill, you know, the yearly repairs, but they'll go down significantly, just I bet you, on your mechanical unit event repairs
Yeah, I don't have a hard number just for that building, but we, you know, we spend several hundred thousand dollars on maintenance of our buildings every year. And not only would we be more efficient with our mechanicals, when we get around to putting new windows in, we just are more efficient with our heating costs, too. So, yes, we would save some money, but I don't, you know, that's just a guess at this point. We don't know exactly what that would be.
It'd be nice to know if we could come up with an estimate, at least, you know?
I think we could come up with not only an estimate on operational cost of repairs, but there's going to be energy savings also that we could come up with and give you those dollars also, and that's good information for the community. Another thing that's harder to put a number on, but Bill talked about the 9.3 million dollars of maintenance that will need to be done over the next 10 years. Well, if we can do a lot of those at the same time as this project that Dan and Jeff just talked about, the economies of scale are a minimum of 10%, if not 20%. So if that makes sense, if you're bringing a mechanical contractor in to redo your mechanical system on a maintenance standpoint, but that they're there at the same time to do the new additions that you looked at, you know, it's, you hear the term, you know, you're paid to open the car door. So it'd only pay to open it once to come to do the whole project is also a significant savings.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're just changing chairs, Bill, right?
Yeah, I'm just moving on to work.
Next up is the Valley View drive reconfiguration.
Chair Larker, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we want to talk about this summer and what were the plans that we have when we look at Valley View and look at the drive reconfiguration over there, very similar to what we did here at Highland last year. Again, we are here to create opportunities for every learner of our students here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. And we look at our core values. This project, we're really looking at community, excellence, and innovation, and we'll talk about some of those as we move through here. But this is kind of small. I did include it in your packet, so you can see it on your screen. But what we're going to be doing, again, is trying to separate the bus drop-off from the student, from the parents bringing their students in. And if you can see, see here, no, to the right button, here. It's hard to see, but this is the, this is the building, okay? So it's hard to see the outline of it. What we did over on the east side of Highland, we'd be doing, again, on the east side of Valley View, where here we have a brand-new bus turnaround. So the students will be coming through this door back by the new addition, by the kindergarten rooms, and would only be bus traffic back here. And over here, right now, we have an entrance into this area right here, where you come in, you turn right or you turn left. We moved the entrance over, so everyone's coming in straight, coming around, and coming out, when we talk about parents. Adding a sidewalk all along here, so we have a large area to drop off students, and we'd include this entrance here as a main entrance of students coming in. So it'd be a lot easier flow for our students, both with parents drop off and over here with the bus drop off. Again, with this project, we also are including the new electronic sign like we did in front of Highland. So it's pretty much, it's almost a mirror, but I think even when we look at separating our traffic, we have a better situation here even than we did at Highland, because on the, whenever people are leaving, we're not intermixing. If you remember, even at Highland, when the parents leave and when the buses leave, we're still coming back to one exit. Here, they each have their separate exit. So we really are separated. We're going to get rid of a lot of our congestion, and we really feel very good about this project going into the summer. We're getting the bids in here in about a week, so our next meeting, you'll have information on the cost of what that project will cost. But this is entirely money coming from our new projects, our capital projects levy that we put in place two years ago. Any questions?
I have a question. So can you talk a little bit, I apologize if I am not quite understanding this, but can you talk about the entrance for the buses and how that would flow with the Columbia Academy entrance? Is that going to have a physical division now?
Yeah, there'll actually be two separate entrances. This, this doesn't show, I'm losing my, but here we go. Right here, as you can see, the entrance into Columbia Academy, see the arrow here?
Yeah.
That's an "in" to come in front of Columbia Academy, whereas over here, we're coming in with the buses here and exiting here. So they're actually separate. So the buses coming out or going in do not mix with the parents coming in at Columbia Academy.
Will there be curbs?
There'll be curbs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The Columbia Academy entrance will shift a little bit onto the east to make sure we get that separated.
Wonderful.
And this was something that was on your list for the capital levy money this year?
Yeah, all this parking reconfiguration and drive configuration was on our list for all of our buildings. We took care of, you know, Columbia Academy, you know, I think it was 2010 or '11, we did it over there. So it's starting to get, actually, a few years ago, but we're moving on through, and it's still our want, is to get the buses and the cars separated from each other. We don't want any dangerous situations with kids walking between those buses.
Is the speckled areas, that back to green space, then?
Yes. The front of the building actually will be all green space. Yes. The front of the building actually will be all green space. This piece here, and the, the new sign will sit right here in, in front of the, the entrance of the building.
Thanks.
As you know, that, that building sits very, very close to the, the road, and we have a lot of congestion just in that front area there. And this really cleans it up. The, it's really going to be a nice improvement to the look of that building also.
Can you remind us again what the, the 10 million levy, other than this parking and reconfiguration, has been spent for or will be spent for?
Well, over the next, we were one year in, so we've got nine more years to go. The other big piece that we're, need to work on in our buildings, besides getting some windows replaced in our, in our buildings that haven't had the windows replaced yet, which we have three buildings, three buildings to go, yeah, well, three and a half. Three buildings to go on windows. Now, the other big piece is, is our plumbing. Actually, we just had a meeting this week with our engineer, really to put a project together now to work on that high school and work on getting our, our water taken care of in that building. We'll, we'll be bringing information to you about a year from now, and that'll be a multi-phase, because we ought to be able to use the, use the building, so we can't just shut all the water off for a few months and change the piping out. So it's going to be a little bit of a job. But that's, the plumbing in the buildings is really the other huge piece that we'll be working on with that money, and we'll be, you'll be seeing that happen starting next summer. Along with, you know, we have a tuck pointing, well, we'll talk about that later tonight, a tuck pointing project over at Columbia Academy. That's the other piece we want to get through all of our buildings in the next 10 years and really get that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is our K-12 activities update. Mr. Miller.
All right. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It is my pleasure to update you all on our participation for our district and give you some highlights from the winter season. So as we've talked tonight, our goal is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and my goal is to create worlds of opportunity for kids to get involved in activities and athletics. Tonight, I want to talk about collaboration. The reason why I want to focus on collaboration is we're going to go over our participation numbers, and they're increasing, and it's a collaboration with myself, with coaches, with advisors, with staff, with parents, and most importantly, with our students. So we have increased our participation this, over this past year from 40% to 29, or, excuse me, 40% to 44%. We have steadily increased since I've, I've started here as the activities director. We did start out three year, three years ago at 29%, so we are increasing. So roughly 44% of our high school students are getting involved in activities and athletics. So one of my yearly goals is to increase. We still have a ways to go, but to increase this number 3% to 5% a, a year. So in front of you in your folder, you should have a participation chart. And again, Sheri and I down in the activities department, we're, we are really working hard on collecting data. And this year, we worked closely to gather data from our activities. And I'm happy to announce, I love athletics and I love activities, but our activities numbers have surpassed the athletics, our, our athletic numbers. So it's not saying our athletic numbers are going down, because they're not. We are steadily increasing. But we are getting more kids involved in activities too. So I'm not going to go down through every program. They're in front of you. But we, uh, we are making improvements in the activities and athletic department. With this slide, this past year, I've hired about four or five new coaches. And last year was seven or eight coaches, and the year before that was 17 coaches. So we're getting some stability in our leadership. Within our coaches, they're staying around. They're not just coaching for a year and leaving. And I, I, I do my best to provide support so they, so they can support our kids. Okay, winter highlights. This year, we had three teams of robotics. See, our elementary, we just had one team that met at CA. It was, we had parent oversee that, a parent volunteer. But with Aaron Kennedy, he helped facilitate that team too. CA had, um, they're booming with teams, so I think they had five teams. Three of those teams went to state. I don't have specific, I'm not going to provide specific names per team, just because the CA State is more like a traveling, traveling league. It's not an associate high school league. But anyways, they are making huge improvements in robotics at Columbia Academy, and my goal is to really transform those kids up the hill and build, build up our high school program. We're providing Destination Imagination at North Park in Highland, and then future problem solving at the high school. Media Arts, we've had a busy winter season. We've had art up at Silverwood. We're going to have art up at the fifth congressional show. We're going to show six pieces there. And we spent the whole day over at Fridley High School at the Tri-Metro Fine Arts Festival in February. And students got a chance to perform and do art all day long over there, so that was quite exciting. Our dance team competed in sections, and our participation numbers increased so much that we started a JV team this year, which is, it's good to see when your numbers are increasing, that much to, that you have to hire an additional coach. Our wrestling team, we had three state entries, Jefferson, Dillon, and Mohammed. They had the chance to go down to the Xcel Center and wrestle in the state tournament. Pretty exciting for them. I have a picture of the, the three. These guys are really softies. They're, they try and look pretty tough in the pictures, but they're all really good, very good student athletes. Our boys swim and dive team, state entries for that. We, um, our time for the 200 medley relay made it to the state, so Ben, William, Marcos, and Sam. And then apart from that, separately, Ben Bardell, she's only, only been diving for two years, he made it to the state tournament too for diving. So these are the gentlemen that got to go swim down at the U of M and their aquatic center. Girls' basketball, had a great season. They lost in the section semis, but they had a great season. Boys, we had an average season, but we have a strong returning class. And gymnastics had a phenomenal season. They had three victories, and I tried to do as much research as I could, but the last time we won a gymnastics meet was, I found out about eight years ago. So we won three this year, and then they got their personal record for total points in a meet. Upcoming events for spring, our spring musical, Grease, has over 70 participants. On your chart, it says 60, but I have about 10 to 12 students helping on a daily basis to help backstage or to help sound, and so I, we probably have about 75, but I just put 70 there. So that's coming up soon, next weekend, and I'm inviting all of you out. The dates are in front of you. It's a 7:00 PM start. There is a matinee on Sunday, the 24th, and that's 2:00 PM. But please come out and support our spring musical. So that's it. Yes, that is in our high school PAC. Superintendent Kelly talked about the choir trip coming up. We are leaving on Thursday at 6:30, no, 7:30. I'll be here at 6:00. But we're going down to Chicago.
That makes me feel better, Matt.
Yeah. We're going to go down to Chicago, and the way this concert choir performed for the special award that we just got, I'm excited to go watch them on the big stage. And then visual arts, this weekend also, we're participating in the State High School League 5AA art show down at the Purpitch Center. So we have 18 pieces of art, and Dane will be driving the school van with some of our art students down there on Saturday. In closing, our summer programming, which is growing, which is a good thing, that helps us compete at a higher level when we do work in the off-season. We have football workouts, camp, strength training for all, any student, actually. You don't have to be in an athletic program to go to the strength training workouts. That's three days a week. Volleyball workouts throughout the summer. We're going to have a gymnastics camp. Our girls' basket, basketball league is going to continue on Monday nights here in the Highlander Center. We'll have boys' basketball workouts, and then this summer will be our first swim and dive camp that's going to meet weekly. And you don't, you don't have to be a varsity athlete to, to join that swim and dive program. And then a Tri-Metro update, no changes to who's in our conference. Last year at this time, I, I presented to you all that Spectrum in St. Croix were potentially going to ask the State High School League to be placed with us, and they did not get placed with us. So no changes to the Tri-Metro, and we're all getting along fairly well. Any questions for me?
I have one question, and it just goes to talk about, when I talk to parents and students at Columbia, at Columbia Heights High School especially, and Columbia Academy as well, one of the highlights is that students at this school are able to participate in activities. Do you know what percentage of students participate in at least one sport or activity?
It's high.
I know.
I don't have that specific number. I can get it. That's going to be Sheri and I digging through.
Okay.
Student by student.
I remember we heard it before, and it seemed pretty high.
It's going to be over 50% of our students, because they're, students involved in athletics like to be involved with activities and vice versa. Students involved in our activities like to be part of a team in the athletic realm too, so.
Well, kudos to you for growing the programs. I mean, they really, they really are getting a lot stronger in strength and numbers, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was curious.
Oh, excuse me. I was just going to say that although some of us will be putting their bags on at 7:30 on the bus, I want to, I want to thank Matt also for taking the four days to go with the choir and chaperone.
Thanks. I was just curious how our programs compare to neighboring districts. Do you have a feel for that?
Yeah, sure. In comparison of records or competition or participation?
Offerings or participation?
Yeah. So Columbia Heights offers, so if you would compare us to Fridley. Fridley doesn't have a synchro team. Fridley doesn't house a adapted soccer team. For our size and our population, we offer more programs than the majority of districts our size, including activities too. So, and to hold the numbers, I think we would compare very well to anybody our size.
That's fantastic to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
And it's so wonderful to see that, that it seems like every, either it's either staying statistically about the same in participation, or it's growing, and it's growing very well. So the kids are definitely participating. I, I know my, my children, I was kind of going down the list and realized they were doing five or six of these.
Yeah.
So, and they're not just doing one. They're, this is a part of enrichment for their day. It's why, sometimes why they want to come to school, so they can participate in band. Or football, or basketball, or whatever that is. Or robotics. That's the other big one. Thank you.
And we can't forget how this flows together with the academics.
Yeah.
Developing mind-body also carries over to academics. So this is great news that way too.
I think their pride in their community and the community's pride in the schools really, they bolster one another too. Thanks.
Great.
Anybody else? Thanks, Matt. Nice job.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is summer school data and evaluation. Zena and Nicole.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We are here today to provide you with information on evaluating academic summer programming. As always, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation will focus on excellence and collaboration. So a quick recap, the goals for summer school is to provide reading and math interventions, opportunities to earn high school credit, English language support, opportunities for fitness, which Director Matt Miller just talked about, services mandated by IEPs, and opportunities for enrichment. So a little bit of data as a, as some context for why summer programming is so important for our students. A 2007 study, national study, showed that comparing achievement gains separately over the school year and the summer months revealed that much of the achievement gap originates over the summer period when children are not in school. A second study from 2011 shows that low-income students continue to perform at considerably lower levels than higher-income peers in reading and mathematics. Research has shown that students' skills and knowledge often deteriorate during the summer months, with low-income students facing the largest losses. And one more study from 2012, this is polling 500 teachers across the nation. So of those teachers in summer learning programs in 15 different cities, 66% said it typically takes them at least three to four weeks to reteach the previous year's skills at the beginning of a new school year. And in addition, 24% said that reteaching takes, of those skills, takes five to six weeks. This is something that we face each fall and want to make sure that we're targeting and inviting students to summer's programming and offering them services that will help combat this summer, summer slide, as they say. So we're going to go through our high school academic program, middle school, and elementary. So our high school summer program, students are based on credit deficiency per Minnesota Department of Education guidelines. There are specific graduation courses that are offered. The staff in summer school for high school is a mix of Columbia Heights staff and District 19, 916 staff. As we have talked about in the past, the high school summer school is really coordinated by District 916. And so Director Hollaby and I have been collaborating with that staff there. And then specific evaluation is dependent upon the course and the credit completion and requirements for each specific course. So if a student is deficient in algebra, there's certain standards in algebra that they have to complete in order to regain that credit. So that one is really varied depending on the course. Middle school summer programming, again, students are based on the criteria that is laid out for us by the Department of Education. Some services that we offer in the summer are transportation, breakfast, lunch, and nurse. So these are important services to provide to our students. The academic supports, students have a lot of access to technology in summer school. They have specific individualization because class sizes are smaller. And they, we offer language development and then comply with each of the students' IEPs. And, um, they, we offer language development and then comply with each of the students' IEPs. Um, the, for middle school, the main curriculum is, it's focused on math and reading and writing. And then our staff, typically we hire nearly a hundred percent of the middle school staff for summer school are Columbia Heights staff. Um, every once in a while, though, there's a year where we hire one staff person from outside of the district if none of our staff have applied for that position first. So if there's a vacancy, but precedence goes to Columbia Heights staff. Um, so how do we evaluate the math and reading growth and the skills over summer? Um, both in math and reading, there's a pre and post-assessment. Um, the assessments are focused on the specific high priority standards for the grade levels. So our math and our, um, English teams at the middle school have identified what those priority standards are. Um, so for example, in math, um, baseline is there, do the students, are the students coming to middle school with basic math facts? Adding subtraction, um, or can they add and subtract fractions? Um, do they have pre-algebra concepts? We know that all of those skills are crucial for success in high school and beyond. Um, in the, um, focusing on math and reading, the pre and post-assessments are around the six traits of writing, um, making inferences based on a text, academic vocabulary. I can see it's running off the screen, but that's what it says. Um, okay. So looking at elementary, again, we follow the criteria to invite students that's given to us by Department of Education. Lots of, um, services and academic supports are provided to the students, transportation, breakfast, lunch, nursing. Um, at elementary, we, um, some, we, um, submitted a proposal for, uh, for AmeriCorps summer reading vistas and we were awarded, um, two summer vistas. So that's a nice partnership that we, um, will have this year. So additional reading tutors for students that provides that individualization, um, lots of access to technology, language development and IEP support. Um, the curriculum for our elementary programs is a bit expanded than, uh, what you might typically find in a summer program. So students are working on math and reading and writing skills, but then in addition, um, they have art and art teacher, a science teacher and PE. So they have, they are able to continue with a wide range of courses. And similarly to middle school, we hire, about a hundred percent of the summer staff are Columbia Heights staff. Um, if we do have a vacancy, then we seek staff from outside of, um, our district. Similarly to middle school, we will have, we have a pre and post-assessment to assess growth on math skills. So when students arrive, um, there's an online pre-assessment and post-assessment. And you can see, um, teachers get data and information so they can really target their instruction that way. Um, for reading, again, a pre and post-assessment online. Um, and here's just an example of some of the data that the teachers would get back and they can, it's automatically color-coded for the teachers so they can see where, um, the students started and what, how they grew and what they grew in. Did you wanna add about IEP?
So regarding EL students, we have opportunities for students who are in levels one through three to have language remediation. And regarding students on an IEP who require services so that they don't regress over the summer, um, the IEP team gets together, the parent and the teachers and, based on the IEP goals and objectives, would work on that in the summer and then assess that in the fall to make sure that the students on track.
So adding to that, the, um, EL students at the elementary level have the opportunity to participate in the summer reading program and this is really an entire family participation program. Um, EL teachers do weekly home visits to home, to students' homes. And oftentimes, these are homes that have lots of siblings or cousins. Um, very frequently, parents stick around and listen to what's going on and participate. Um, so the teacher will provide a bag of leveled reading books and then also, uh, do about a one-hour reading lesson with the students. And then they come back each week for six to seven weeks, um, with new books. So it's like a library at your doorstep and in your home. Um, we, this is really, over the years, has promoted family involvement and made families feel like they're a part of, um, you know, s- the school environment, even during the summertime. Um, we evaluate the reading skills using that same assessment, um, a pre and post-assessment that's, that kids take online in the spring and then in the fall for this one. And, um, it seems like, oh, you know, a teacher drops off some books once a week and talks to kids once a week, what could that do? But we've really seen, um, that kids are maintaining or gaining a reading level over the summer with, um, I think it's powerful having the whole home in- involved. So nationally, when we look to, this is gonna cut off, when we look to, um, what are best practices in summer programming, these are things that we strive for when we offer our summer programming. Um, this, these are based on a twenty, two thousand and eleven, I'm not sure why it's cutting off, um, study. Um, so we track student attendance. We do a lot of inviting, um, calling, mailing a postcard home. The first week of summer school, anyone who didn't show up, the clerical calls every day to home to, to really make sure we're recruiting, um, students so that they have that opportunity. Um, and all of the other pieces that you can see. We really work to see what are, what are the best practices and implement that for our students. There we go. So if there's any questions?
Where does the funding come from primarily for this?
Targeted services.
Okay. So it's our budget, not nine sixteen?
The money flows through nine sixteen. Since we're part of the intermediate, um, several of the districts that are part of the nine sixteen intermediate flow their targeted services money through nine sixteen so that we're able to provide summer school more cost-effectively and efficiently.
Okay. So it's our money flowing through nine sixteen?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment, I think, um, when you were talking about the summer reading program, I think the family engagement piece of that is huge and critical too. Just, I see those, um, the groups that are targeted and their involvement is, um, is wonderful to see. And I think, I just wanted to highlight that program. I think it's a great job.
Yeah, it's a great program. Thank you.
Anybody else?
How do students get targeted? Is it through their teachers or tests or?
So it's, it's a combination. It's a collaboration between the district office looking at data to make sure that, um, students qualify based on MDE criteria. You know, maybe they're, um, not proficient in a certain area, maybe they, it's, maybe it's stated in their IEP that they have extended school year. So there's a variety, but.
Credit-deficient high school.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. Um, and then, so we send a preliminary list to the teachers and the teachers have the chance to weigh in and say, oh, actually, um, that student has now, you know, become very proficient and wouldn't need that extra support. Or, oh, actually, you forgot this student, can we add that student? So that's how, before any invitations go out to summer school, it's run through the district office looking at the data and then run through the teacher looking at the whole child. And then they, and then we invite the families and they register and.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kayce. Uh, next up is special education sporting activities.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Delighted that you've all invited, uh, Director Miller and myself here to talk about special education sporting activities. And we brought, um, Director Dollar Bill here, Holmgren, to talk about any financial implications because it's always important. Um, so our mission, create worlds of opportunities for every learner. And this is really about community, collaboration and courage. Um, I'd like to say innovation too because we've, um, had our programs for quite a few years and we're really proud of them. So first I'd like to talk about Unified Sports. And, um, people get a little confused. They hear about special education sporting, uh, opportunities. They don't know what's unified, what's adaptive. And then there's a third one we won't discuss, but you might have heard of Allied and it's very popular in the East Coast. And so we, we don't have that here in Minnesota. So the two, uh, sports that we participate in, in the state, and Columbia Heights participates in as well, I'm proud to say, are Unified and Adaptive. So I will speak about Unified. Uh, Unified Sports is part of Special Olympics. Special Olympics, um, brought this concept, um, to, uh, states. And Minnesota was one of the first states to start to participate. And it joins people with intellectual disabilities partnered, um, with people who don't have intellectual disabilities on the same team. So we have a minimum of three athletes and then three partners. That's the minimum of a unified team. Uh, Special Olympics offers three sports, bowling, basketball and track and field. And Columbia, Columbia Academy participated in the bowling and, um, were invited to the basketball invitational last year. I'd like to show some pictures of our teams. My pictures speak a thousand words. So we had large teams. And just some comments that, um, some of the kids said. Uh, so by participating in Unified Sports, I've learned that, um, when we work together, we are unstoppable. So that was one of my favorite quotes. Another pictures of the Unified.
We took first, by the way.
He's the statistician, statistician.
All right. I'm gonna talk about adapted sports. Um, and all my athletic programs, um, adaptive is just another one of my athletic programs. I don't view it differently. Um, it is put on through the State High School League. It is a, uh, it is a State High School League program. Um, we have adapted soccer here at Columbia Heights. And, uh, adapted sports wa- was adopted, um, by the State High School League in nineteen ninety. And for soccer, there's, um, uh, there's four divisions. Uh, and two of the divisions we call PI, which is physical impairment. And the two other divisions is cognitive impairment, so CI and PI. Um, and it's just like any other athletic program, there's a season. Uh, adapted soccer is eight to ten weeks. Uh, we went a little longer because we made it to the state tournament this year. And, um, again, it, it, it is organized just like any other program. There is a state tournament, there's teams. Uh, there, there aren't conferences with adapted, uh, soccer at least. There are divisions just because of the, uh, number of districts that have it. So that's why I'm impressed with Columbia Heights. We, we have this opportunity for our kids. And, um, there's, there's only two divisions in CI in the state of Minnesota and we're involved in one of those divisions. So, um, and it was breathtaking when we made it to the state tournament and our students rallied and we brought two, two buses and we shook the State High School League. I mean, we're on their front page the next day. Um, because we showed up and, uh, we rallied with our students. Um, so we started adapted soccer here at Columbia Heights and we have a CI cognitive impairment team in two thousand and twelve. And we are an official co-op with St. Anthony High School. And again, this past season, we made it to the state tournament. Um, a couple of highlights from our upperclassmen is Lane Lund. Um, he had a career, uh, of a hundred and seventy-four goals. That's gonna be hard to beat. Uh, so he's gonna have that record for a while. And then our goalie, Tyler, he made the all-tournament team, which is, you're the best in the state. Um, so that award is, you can't get any higher than that. Uh, here's a picture of our team with Coach Megan and Coach Denzer. Some, uh, action shots, Elaine and Mark. That would be Riley and that'd be Mark again. Uh, we, I always get comments when we host home games in the Highlander Center. Uh, some coaches would rather come play in our gym than host a home game. Um, so it's set up extremely well in our west-end Highlander Center gym for, uh, adapted soccer game.
I just wanna make a comment. I just noted that referee that is, um, in the left, she wrote a letter, uh, to the district. Um, I know Director Miller got a copy, so did I, as well as the coaches, saying in all her years of refereeing, uh, adaptive sports, the Columbia Heights-St. Anthony team was the best-mannered, the, um, most, uh, sportsmanlike toward them, other teammates and themselves. And that the coaches had the most integrity and the most passion for her kids that she had ever seen. And when she was at the state tournament, uh, to see the fan buses and the families pour out and into the stands, she said brought tears to her eyes and highly, highly commended our kids and our staff at Columbia Heights. It was a beautiful letter.
She didn't wanna tell anybody, but she wanted us to win the state tournament.
No bias there.
So future plans here are gonna be, uh, I'm gonna explore this spring for, um, Unified Sports, track and field. I wanna, uh, go observe how does that work, um, before we dive into Unified Track and Field. Uh, but for next fall, we are gonna bring up to the high school Unified Bowling and see how that goes. Uh, I'm, um, assuming it's gonna go well and our kids are gonna get involved. Um, so we would move forward then, uh, if everything goes smoothly to get Track and Field involved too in the spring for our kids.
So, okay, yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, as far as the Unified, um, Track and Field, my understanding, was there any exploration of that for this year yet? Or is that done for this year, looking at it for next year?
Correct. It's done for this year. I'm looking at it for next year and the reasoning is, um, I wanna do my research before I start a new program here because I want it to be successful. And I want our kids safe and I want our kids coached up, if, if that makes sense. So it's, it's not gonna happen this year. I'm gonna attend one or two track meets to see how they're run so I can coach up. Um, because the research I've done is the varsity program, therefore our Track and Field program, our current program, would helps facilitate and run that. And I'm not, I don't have the knowledge right now to coach my head coach, Casey, to run a Unified Track Meet. If that makes sense.
Yep. Okay. One other question is that, a, a few years ago, my understanding, this was prior to my involvement in any sort of adapted, um, athletics, is that there was, um, some conversation about starting with adapted soccer and then exploring either hockey or softball being added on. And I guess I, I just kinda wonder if you could talk about that. I know that there are several parents that are, um, disappointed that that hasn't come to fruition yet. Um, is that ever going to, is that tabled? Can you just talk about that a little?
So in two thousand and twelve is when we started, um, we approached St. Anthony because the director there had said they didn't have an opportunity. Um, we approached Fridley at that, and they do not have an adaptive program in Fridley. Um, Spring Lake Park, we approached and they were already in a co-op with Centennial School District. So St. Anthony committed to doing one sport with us. Um, since two thousand and twelve, the St. Anthony, um, participation has dropped significantly to the point where they have one player on our team now. Um, so we don't know, and that player's aging out too. So we don't know if we even will have a cooperative with St. Anson, St. Anthony, um, in the adaptive soccer. So it is a cost factor, um, and you need to have enough players to form a team as well, a viable team, so that the kids have fun and success too. Uh, so, um, you know, we're, we're talking to other districts. We're seeing, um, who has what, who needs what, who wants to get involved in something. Um, so nothing is off the table, but there is a cost. And, um, we thought our participation with St. Anthony would grow rather than diminish. So that has been a turn we did not expect at all.
Okay. What are the numbers needed for floor hockey? Um, is that similar to the soccer? I know, it sounds like softball would require more team members. Do you know offhand?
Softball would. Uh, floor hockey, there's at least six on the floor. Um, and to field a, uh, a softball team, I believe they have seven to eight. They, they play in a gymnasium. Uh, they don't play outside on a, on a softball field. Um, but it would, our participation, for me, adding, um, programming, we wanna make sure. we wanna make sure we have the participation numbers. We wanna make sure we have the support. And I wanna do it well. So again, it's not completely off the table.
No, but we need to explore if we could have any future partners and what the interest would be internal and external with other partners, whether it be St. Anthony or...
I would just like to interject because I think part of the confusion is because we keep exploring that parents get confused because they think it's coming. So in the short term, we would not be planning on?
Yeah, sorry if I'm not clear. Because we unexpectedly lost team members from St. Anthony, we thought the program would grow equally, exponentially, I should say, and it has not. So I know at this time, St. Anthony is not interested in expanding. Therefore, right now, we aren't either. But I have talked to other districts to see if there might be interest. At this time, there is not. So thank you for clarifying that. And we'll just have to, that's why we're excited about expanding with the Unified and bringing more opportunities. We met with the gentleman from Special Olympics, who is in charge of Unified Sports in the metro. Had a very productive meeting, got a lot of information. And that's when we decided to then pilot Unified Bowling at the high school. And the feedback we've gotten from families, the athletes and the partners, has been so overwhelmingly positive. We definitely wanna keep expanding the Unified and then we'll just have to report out from there.
Thank you.
I'm just kinda curious as to whether or not even 916 might have, you know, participants that, you know, even in some of those programs.
Well, I do know they are very heavily exploring the Unified. That seems to be a trend nationally because it gets kids in real social situations with typical peers. And I think that's really important, particularly for kids that are at 916 who are in our setting for programs. They really need those experience with natural and productive interactions with typical peers. Also, the Special Olympics programming, they offer a lot of financial support through Special Olympics. So it's not as costly for districts. So, you know, the directors seem to be going in that trend nationally.
I just want to say, you know, I appreciate everything that you're doing. I think the concern just comes from some of the parents being worried about their children, you know, their physical fitness and what activities are available. And so only having that one sport, it's hard because I recognize that only having one sport is huge compared to many other districts. So first and foremost, you know, I wanna make sure that's out there, that I, you know, we appreciate that the soccer program is here. But I think I would just encourage as much of the exploration of the Unified Sports. And if we could have that as a year long, so that those children have access to activities as well, I think that would really help a lot of the families feel better about that situation.
Yeah, so since we've just completed our first year of Unified and talking about the second year, I think there's lots of possibilities for that.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fantastic job.
I have one more announcement, sorry. I did not update. One spring event coming up is our Athena Award winner, which is Abby Born. She's a senior. She is a three-sport athlete. She's all-conference in all these sports. This fall, she was named one of the top five goalies in the state for saves. And she is one of my best. So there's a luncheon on May 6th down in Bloomington at the Hilton, I believe. So if you see her, I can give you guys in your board update, some pictures and a write-up on Abby, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our action items. First up is the Canvas Returns of the School District's Special School Board Election B. That's a resolution and Don and Paul?
Yes, yeah, unfortunately Andy couldn't make it tonight, so.
I'm glad you could make it, thanks.
Just tipping it for her. Thank you for having us and for putting on so many elections. We finally reached the end of the road here and I'm sure you all are excited to move forward as you are. And congratulations on your win and welcome. So I believe we have the Canvas and the returns to pass around and just to get those signed. But everything from a logistical and administrative standpoint went very well with all of the elections, including up to this last one. I think noteworthy that the final of the four elections did have a fairly sizable jump in turnout. Always good to see more people come out to these elections. And a somewhat related note, I'm sure many of you have been following the legislative updates to see that this may no longer be the process moving forward. And we've all got an eye towards that as well. But from our side, everything went very well. And we appreciate all the support that we got from the school district and from our election judges who came out all four times and spent their entire days at the polls to see things through. So we can open it up to any questions that you have, if there are any?
What we normally would do at this point is we have a resolution that we'd have to read and then open up for discussions or questions, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
If I get a motion, a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
One second. Maddie and Ted, I'll read the resolution. It's a resolution canvassing returns of votes of Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13. Special election held since January 26th.
Oh, it's April 5th, my error.
April 5th, 2016. It is hereby found, determined and declared that the special election of the voters of this school district held on April 5th, it is in there, there, was in all respects duly and legally held, as specified in the attached abstract and return of votes cast. A total of 1,343 voters of the district voted at said special election for one vacancy in the school board, in the school board member caused by resignation. Votes cast for the officer as follows. Hala Samurai, 740 votes. Tim Oats, 599 votes. Wright-In, four votes. Hala Samurai, having received the highest number of votes, is elected to the office of school board member for a term ending the first Monday in January of 2019. The clerk is hereby directed to certify results of the election to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. And the clerk is hereby directed to deliver a certificate of election to each person entitled there to. Questions, conversations, discussion from board?
Guess I'll ask my standard question. Is there any reason to believe that these aren't the actual results of the election?
I'm sorry, could you?
Is there any reason to believe these aren't the actual results of the election?
No, these are confirmed with the returns from the voting machines on election night. So everything as posted and that you see in front of you is the official result.
Any other questions?
And we'll correct the title, the wrong date.
Yeah, I will correct that on the resolution.
Everything else is correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ted, if you would, please read the roll.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lanmore, aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Do you wanna do the signing of that now?
We'll do that at the end of the night.
You okay with that?
Yeah, if everyone stays after, I'll do that when we're done with the meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna keep him here in London. Okay, next up is the Columbia Academy Tuck Pointing bids.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, I bring forward, looking for action on the bids for our tuck pointing project at Columbia Academy. In your packet, I included the recommendation from Inspec. They are the company that has actually been, they've been working with us for multiple years, looking at our buildings and looking at what really needs to be done. But they specialize in the outer envelope of buildings. So the tuck pointing is right up their alley. And I'm gonna ask you tonight to award the actual bid to do the work to Western Specialty Contractors, an amount of $216,795.
Okay, can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
One second.
Ted? Discussion?
These are the low, this was the low bid and?
Yeah, this is the lowest bid and we're very confident in the work that this company has done. And actually, we're very pleased. We expected the bids to come and we'd end up paying about 250, so at 216, we're saving a few dollars and we are pleased about that.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next is a resolution on termination, elimination and reduction of programs.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Information was presented at the March 15th work session on the elimination of administrative positions. Tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the elimination of positions listed in the resolution in your board packet.
Motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Ted?
Second.
More, I'll read the resolution. Resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions due to enrollment and departmental efficiencies. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 adopted a resolution on January 12, 2016, directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas, said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. The following programs and positions be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes and departmental efficiencies. Be one FTE Assistant Principal, Valley View Elementary School. One FTE Assistant Principal on Special Assignment and Teaching and Learning Department. And one FTE Interim Assistant Principal, Columbia Academy. Discussion?
Will these affect the classroom at all?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Ted, if you would, please read the roll.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lanmore, aye.
Next up is a resolution for termination of probationary administrative employees.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. On January 12, 2016, the school board adopted a resolution directing the superintendent and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs and positions to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures as necessary. The board is being asked to adopt the following resolution to terminate and non-renew the employment contracts of those probationary administrators that are listed within it.
Motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Maddie? Read the motion. Resolution related to the termination and non-renewal of the contracts of probationary administrative employees. Whereas, following individuals are probationary teachers assistant principals in Independent School District Number 13, listed below. Be it resolved by School Board of Independent School District Number 13 that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122-8.40 subdivision 5, the contracts of said persons listed on page 2 of this resolution in Independent School District Number 13 are hereby terminated and not renewed effective the last day of the school for 2015-2016. Be it further resolved, the written notice be sent to said probationary teachers assistant principals regarding termination and non-renewal of their contracts as provided by law. And that said, notice shall be in substantially the following form. Non-notice of termination and non-renewal. Discussion?
So these are all administrators, administrative staff?
Correct.
Okay. So again, it shouldn't affect the classroom, right Superintendent? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ted, please read the roll.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lanmore, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is, on an action item, would be the walking distance and transportation.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. At our last work session, we had a discussion on transportation and the changes that I think the administration thinks we should go forward with. And the first one, if you remember, we talked about kindergarten students and the concern from parents of how young these students are. And a lot of our area in our district do not have sidewalks. That we really talked about adding some transportation to transport all our kindergarten students to school. This particular move doesn't cost us a really, a lot of money. It really only need, we need to add one route to take care of that. We have some room on, we have the right building, right? In Valley View, we would have to add a bus in the Highland area. And North Park actually only has one walker, so that's not gonna affect the busing over there. So tonight, we're asking for action to add one bus for this next coming up school year to transport all 100% of our kindergarten students to school.
Hear a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Ted?
Second.
Molly? Discussion?
Is this, just within our district's boundaries then?
Yes, this is, yeah, it'd just be a bus within the Highland Elementary area.
Okay.
And it's mainly the walking area because the other areas are already picked up.
Okay.
I think this is a smart move going forward and I just wanna be sure. So at this point, there's commitment to continue this yearly?
Yes, I would say, yeah, going forward, we will continue to transport our kindergarten students each year going forward.
Thank you.
And we're already transporting the pre-K?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
This comment, I understand that many other districts, not many, other districts also transport kindergarteners. So from a parity standpoint, this seems to be a good move for our district. Is the cost roughly around, I think you said 53,000?
Well, it's a high 40s. I believe it's about 48 and a half thousand. On the year we're in, we'll have a 2% increase going into next year. So it's just under $50,000 per route.
And we can absorb that in our budget?
Yeah, we've made, yeah, it's built into the budget, the assumptions that we're using for this next year.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I think it's money well spent, as I said before. Keep kids safe. The safest transportation, I learned, is in a school bus, so.
Anybody else? Any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next up is the Highlander Exercise Room.
Yeah, back on February 16th, we talked about the Highlander Center Exercise Room position. And we talked about the subsidies that we are putting forth each year to keep that program running. I added a handout in your packet. You should have received it actually a week ago too, in the update. And when I'm looking through that tonight, it looks like the formatting came up a little funny. So I'll just quickly walk through that. There were questions about, you know, when are we open, when does the city site open? The city site is open every weekday, Monday through Friday, in the morning from 9:00 to 11:00. And then in the evening, our exercise room is open the same time as the city. The city runs from 6:00 till 8:30, Monday through Thursday. We run from 6:00 till 9:00, Monday through Thursday. So we're actually, both sides are actually open at the same time. The only thing that is different, when timing for our community, is Saturday, we are open in the morning from 9:00 till noon. The city is not open during the weekend. The different rates for, between the school district and the city are pretty much identical. When we look at a $10 rate for a resident and a $20 rate for a non-resident. And then again, just to point out that we are running between about 13,000, almost $14,000 on a yearly basis in deficit, running that program. And in the interest of getting next year's budget balanced, we brought this forward to you as a consideration to eliminate that position.
Motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
More?
One second.
Ted? Discussion?
Just to clarify, when you were talking about the hours that the Highlander Center for the students is open versus the city? for the students is open versus the city, this will not have an impact on any of the students in Columbia Heights schools?
Oh, absolutely correct, yeah. They were only talking about the adult period from 6 o'clock on. That room is very full before that.
If I might add, for the students after school is when the students make use of it. In the evening is when it's adults within our community and beyond our community. So, no impact for students. Thank you.
Not sure if it's a possibility, but anyway, that we have an idea of who the people are that have been utilizing it, that we'll be able to notify them, and they don't just show up when the door's locked, or anything? Any thoughts on that?
Absolutely. We have the records of everyone who has ever used the Highlander Exercise Room. And it was interesting to note that typically, they just use it for a couple of months, and then they stop using it. So, there are no longstanding users that would be impacted by this.
Okay. All right, thanks. But we'll be able to?
Absolutely, yes. We'll get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I should also mention that July is the month that we are always closed, so we also have always communicated that out with the public.
Do you have a target date for this? I mean, is this going through the end of the year, or is it immediate?
Our suggestion is July 1st, would be the change with the change of the fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Discussion.
Do we know, on average, how many people use it now, per month, or?
For example, right now, we have nine, and that's very high for us. Typically, it's more in the three to five or six for the whole month.
So, they could easily go to the city side?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board topics. Anybody have anything for board topics tonight?
La Power, that's the weekend. That's noon to 4:00.
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's on the website.
I believe it. Well, yeah, I don't know.
It was at noon on the website. I think so.
Yeah, so that'll be our third time hosting it?
Second.
Second time hosting it, so. I went the first year, I did miss last year, I will miss this year again, but I highly recommend, if you've never been to one, go. It is a lot of fun. It really is. So, that's going on. And anybody else?
I gotta pitch the Valley View Family Fun Night, April 22nd. Always a great time.
Oh, actually, there is one other thing, too, and this is open to the public. If anybody is interested in going, it is gonna be at the Capital View, at the Cap, do I actually have, we got it in our packet this week. I should have it in here. There is going to be, yeah, a movie, Paper Tigers, which they're gonna be showing over at Capital View on Monday, April 18th. It is open to the public. There's gonna be two showings, one at 3:00 to 5:30 p.m., and one at 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. And what it is, is it's a, it's a story about a school that was having a lot of issues, and how they managed to actually reach these kids, and actually really turn their lives around. So, it's, I'm really looking forward to it. And it is open to the public. It is free, okay? Fun night? Okay. Anyway, free is always good, right?
Any other board topics?
Actually, it's a carnival. I misspoke. It's the Valley View Carnival.
Oh, that's the 22nd?
Yeah.
Mr. Miller talked about the play. That's on the website, being advertised as well. You got nothing to do, drive to Chicago this weekend. I think the performance is at 1:30, and it's free admission, so.
Good to know.
Has it been announced? I heard this is Ms. Jungers' last musical. Do we know?
I don't think that she's informed administration, although there's a rumor, but we don't know.
Okay.
Because multiple times, she's said it's her last already.
Okay, all right.
When she doesn't renew next year, we'll see.
All right.
Any other board topics? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:09.